All right, let's take a moment of silence and reflection before we embark upon our business. Okay, thank you very much. We'll officially call the meeting to order and welcome everyone for being here today. Let's stand and say we pledge allegiance to the flag to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope we're allowed to continue to do that. All right, number four on our agenda. For those of you that may not know, in the rear of the room, the table is a copy of the agenda and the other supporting documents. You're welcome to pick up all that you find of interest. And also I'd ask anyone in the room that cannot hear, if you'll raise your hand and we will try to speak into the microphones better and speak louder. So, thank you again for being here. And number four on the agenda, let's turn our attention to consideration of approving the agenda as presented. Is there such a motion or any changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take the motion number thirteen, I mean the item number thirteen off the agenda for right now. Please.
All right. Is there any other concerns? Need a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve.
So, all right, in favor say aye, opposed say no. It's unanimously approved as amended. Number five minutes, uh, the minutes of September twenty-one and October the first. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. I'd like to second that.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Smith, discussion hearing that all in favor say aye, opposed say no. They're unanimously approved. Public comments, Madam Clerk has reflected on this document. There is no one that signed up to speak. Is that correct?
That's correct. And there were two email comments that I gave you guys, but they were on the item that you just removed. They are online if anybody would like to list them.
All righty. Police report. Chief Dixon, would you like to give us a presentation, sir? Thank you again for all you and your staff do for all of us.
Thank you. Glad to be here this evening. So, uh, the numbers that we have here for September, um, first through the thirtieth, our season started winding down in September, so our numbers are pretty consistent with what we normally see through that time of the year. Um, I don't have a lot to talk about on this. I got a couple of other things in the back of the police report here. But if you have questions on this, comments, concerns, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you. And if not, we'll move to a couple of other things that may be of interest. So, the next page here is actually session law, um, twenty-one dash thirty-three. And it's came from Senate Bill two forty-one. Um, it has to do with mini trucks, low-speed vehicles, and modified utility vehicles, which are going to be the new things that are seen on the roadways. Um, if you flip back, you can actually see some pictures because I wasn't a hundred percent sure what a mini truck was. Um, or, excuse me, a modified utility vehicle. But it's basically these side-by-sides that you see. Um, they have certain requirements that they have to meet. And as far as engine size, width, height, weight, all of that stuff. Um, if you need that, it's in here, or I can go through it in detail, but it's a summary there. The biggest difference is that unlike low-speed vehicles, they are not restricted to thirty-five mile an hour zones. They can operate anywhere where the speed limit is posted fifty-five miles per hour or below. Um, the restriction for that is they can't do it on a four-lane highway that's posted fifty-five miles per hour. So, US seventeen would be out. NC one thirty from Shiloh to Holden Beach would be in because it's only a two-lane road, fifty-five miles per hour. So, you would actually be able to legally operate one of these vehicles from Shiloh to Holden Beach without ever touching a four-lane highway. You could leave there, go up Stone Chimney, take two eleven all the way to Oak Island, never touch a four-lane highway. Um, you could go the opposite direction from Shiloh, take one seventy-nine to Ocean Isle Sunset Beach. So, you could really navigate Brunswick County without ever having to touch seventeen and make it up and down the coast. So, that's, that's just something to be aware of. That law actually came into effect on October first, I believe. Yes, October first. So, those are legally registrable. Um, I have not personally run into one here on the beach. I have seen some, um, on the roadways, not in Brunswick County, just in my travels out and about. So, um, just wanted to make you aware that we may see some of those. So, if you have questions on that, yes.
Side-by-side vehicles, like they use off-road and like a gator or something like that, is what you're referring to?
So, the gators are a little bit different, um, because of the engine size that's required and the height and width requirements that are, that have to be met. Um, and those numbers, let me find those before I lie to you. But there's something about the actual width where it has to be...
Fifty-eight inches or greater.
Fifty, that's correct. Um, you've got to have an overall height of sixty inches or greater. And a lot of your, your gator side-by-sides, like the little UTVs, don't actually meet those requirements. They're not going to have, I think there was something about engine size in there too that, um, actually it looks like engine displacement greater than twenty-four hundred cubic centimeters they removed. Um, so, you know, there's, we're still, I'll be honest with you, we're still learning about this too and trying to nail down all the details. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. But I think the UTVs are actually not going to meet the standard because they're not going to be of the right size.
The bottom line is if they've got a license plate on them and a registration card...
That's, that is correct. That is the bottom line. If they go through the proper chains and get them registered as a modified utility vehicle, then, you know, once they have a license plate on them, just like low-speed vehicles, they will be able to operate up and down the roadways, just like any other motor vehicle.
But this does not include a low-speed vehicle, in other words, twenty-one...
This, this is, this is part of that same statute, correct. Low-speed vehicles can still not operate in a fifty-five mile an... They're still restricted to thirty-five miles per hour or lower. Yes, they did, they did not change anything with low-speed vehicles.
The way I read, the way I read this...
Yes, sir.
Is that they wouldn't be allowed to operate if it's posted at thirty-five miles an hour unless it was a four-lane road. So, they wouldn't be allowed to operate on Holden Beach.
That, that's not my understanding, but if you'll give me a minute to read where you're sit, where, where are you reading that at?
Page twenty-five, where modified utility vehicles may be driven.
Okay. So, that, what that's saying is if it's four more lanes, only if the posted speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour or less. So, you have some cities, like I'll throw Raleigh under the, they've got six-lane highways where the speed limit's thirty-five where you're going through town. They would actually be able to operate on that six-lane highway because the speed limit's thirty-five miles per hour, if, if that makes sense. They may only be operated on a roadway with four or more travel lanes if the speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour or less. So, you can only operate on four or more travel lanes if you meet the standard of thirty-five miles per hour or less.
To make you feel better, I had to read that for a while.
Yeah. Any other questions on these modified utility vehicles?
Jerry, we just keep, keep coming.
That's, that, yes, it does.
Well, I'm just going to comment that it's hard for us to see if people are wearing seat belts, to recognize whether or not one of these is equipped with a windshield and windshield wipers, to decide whether somebody has to have a safety helmet on, it's going to be impossible.
It's, yeah, it's, we're going to, we are, we're going to run into all kinds of challenges with it. It's, it's honestly, it's going to be a learning experience for us too. So, there are other states that have done it. Um, you know, these are legal in some other states, and I'm actually trying to track down and get some information from some agencies who have been through this before, so.
Whenever I had the rental business, I actually had people from other states bring their vehicle here, only to be told they couldn't ride it down the highway.
That's right.
I took some major testing.
Yeah.
Literally.
It's, it's my, and I, I, I have this on rumor, so don't put a lot of weight into it. But it's my understanding that Tennessee is one of those states that allows that. And there's a lot of people who are operating across the Tennessee state line up in the mountains. Apparently, they utilize these vehicles a lot back and forth between Tennessee and North Carolina. So, some of those agencies in the mountains are going to start seeing this.
Some of the west states also don't require tags or anything, because pretty much it's a lot of the space.
Just, yeah, yeah. So, but that's, that's, that's where we're at with those. Um, the other one is probably not going to be as big an impact on, on necessarily the town itself maybe. But, um, we have run into this problem increasingly over the, the summer. You'll notice these vehicles where the, the back end is just about dragging the ground and the front end is thirty-six inches up in the air and the headlights hit you and you can't see where you're going. So, um, the state's actually addressed that in session law one twenty-eight with House Bill six ninety-two. And some of those modifications are actually going to be illegal now. That's going to come into effect December first. Um, but that Carolina squat, which is what a lot of people call it, where the back end is lower than the front, those modifications are not going to be allowed to be more than four inches. So, yeah. Um, so we just, we want to get that word out there. If you've got one of those vehicles, you've got to get it right because December first, it's, uh, it changes, so. But that's all I've got on the police report. Um, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, like I said, I'll be glad to try to help you out.
Still concerned at the number of, um, golf carts I see particularly around the weekends west of Greensboro where they're not supposed to be on Ocean Boulevard right now, unless they're just crossing it to go to a beach access or something. They're still, they're still out there.
And we're, we're still seeing it some and still trying to address it when we run across it. We know it happens when we're not seeing it, um, but when we do see it, we are addressing it, so. Um, most of them, I actually, which I was gone for a little while, but I have not seen as much of it in the last couple of weeks personally. Um, and I've, I've tried to ride down that way a few times. But I know right after the speed limit change, we were still seeing a lot of it, and it's kind of, it's starting to taper down for us now. We've, we've noticed that. We know it's still going on, but we are working on addressing it.
It's just a drastic decrease.
Increase, really.
Because when there seem to be forty-five, now it's sixty, so it's amazing how fast forty-five seems now. We're used to the thirty-five, and sometimes that's just not fast enough or something, and it's kind of, kind of scary and those vehicles just don't need to be there.
That's correct, that's correct. Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Mr. Hewitt, number eight.
Yes, sir. Uh, the memo that's titled Paid Parking Plan that I've submitted, it's part of the Commissioner's package, um, is an attempt to articulate an answer to the Commissioner's charge, uh, addressing to identify how many lots exist, how many spaces would be available for paid parking, uh, to identify town-owned property that's suitable for conversion to, to paid parking, uh, to include estimated cost for the conversion in addition to what properties might be available for purchase for paid parking. Um, so what we've done here, this big map in front of you, is attempted to lay out all of the intersecting rules, regulations, uh, and variables involved, uh, in establishing where parking currently is, uh, where it might be. I'm sure that there may be some errors in this. It's a compendium of multiple sources of data, along with an attempt to depict various regulations, uh, that exist. All these things, uh, come together on, on the map. So, what we've done is, uh, probably just as critical to any, uh, discussions on what a parking lot is, is the differentiation, uh, between on-street, off-street parking, what's real estate and what's actually a street. So, in order to do that, what we've done here is to show town streets, um, state streets, in addition to the authority that makes the differentiation on how the funding for town streets is, uh, acquired through the Powell Bill. Um, included also in the memo, and, and I won't belabor the, the number, uh, and of different, and the different authorities uh, that are involved in that, but, um, I do detail the difference between on-street and off-street parking, um, on our Powell Bill map to include identifying which properties that are, be simple real estate that the town owns, um, to include what street right-of-way regulations exist by, by town ordinance, and also, uh, parking regulations. So, in addition to laying out the streets, the properties that, uh, are within the corporate lim, limits, also, uh, made an effort to identify what type of densities there are that exist. So, we've, we've taken the Brunswick County GIS, uh, map and overlaid on the, our zoning map here, all of the properties that are basically had a house on them. There are some structures like a church and town hall, um, and in the commercial district, but pretty much if there's a black dot on it, it's a house. Um, so, uh, and what we see is that, is, is what we know is that the town, um, is probably eighty percent built out. Um, uh, so that will factor, I'm sure, into a discussion. Uh, in addition to that density, uh, there's been an attempt to identify it by section. You know, we've got the canal subdivisions, but then we have other subdivisions that are, uh, not so readily identifiable in, in total. Um, um, so those are also demarked on there, and they're also detailed in the memo. I speak to, uh, some of the atypical, the built-upon environment, uh, realities that we're going to see in any assessment of what paid parking is additionally. You know, a normal lot, a stand, what I call the Holden Beach Standard Lots, and they do vary, but normally a, a lot at Holden Beach is fifty feet wide and a hundred feet deep. You know, there are other variables. So, that's, uh, you know, given the setbacks and the, the optimization of the building environment, that's going to give a, an envelope per se that parking might be, uh, considered. It's going to be a constraint for sure. Um, so, uh, paring all of that down, uh, additionally is the fact that we've included the, the draft parking plan, uh, previously approved, uh, for release by the board for Block Q. Um, and also noted that the, the town is currently under contract to purchase the pier property. So, the Block Q, uh, property up there is two hundred and fourteen spaces. Um, and the, uh, the pier property at four forty-one is estimated to provide about eighty parking spaces. Uh, just a, a footnote to the Block Q property. Uh, the attempt here is to pick, to depict the way it is today with the current regulations and not do any what is. So, what if we did this? What if we did that? With the exception of the, of the Block Q, uh, properties, that, that actually would require the, um, the abandonment of Carolina Avenue that separates the two smaller pieces of property within Block Q, so that the whole thing, uh, would, would provide two hundred and fourteen, uh, ten by eighteen-foot parking spaces. So, uh, I don't believe that I answered the, the tasker to actually ground-truth specific lots because of the details associated with some of the constraints in what is defined as parking lot, real estate or parking lot, street right-of-way. So, that, those are some of the, the challenges that, that we're going to have to search through in order to make, uh, a refined decision on, uh, moving forward with paid parking. So, that's the map. This is my memo that explains it, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions of y'all.
Any questions, anybody?
I just, I was under the impression that we were going to kind of get a number of available parking spaces. So, there's no way to come up with that number, or is that something?
That, that's, that's, um, I wasn't able to get to that. I think that there are some variables like, like I mentioned, um, on what, and, and there's going to have to be a judgment call, and I was loathe to make a judgment call in the presentation of this analysis in order to get to what available parking spaces is. And I'll, I'll go ahead and stick my, my foot out on this one. For example, what's available? Well, I don't see how you're going to do paid parking over in, say, the, the canal subdivisions. I'll just use them for an example. There, there is, there is parking allowed there, but my comment about the built-upon environment, you have the fifty-foot lot, you have five-foot setbacks, that's ten feet. Now, you've got forty feet to work with. Most of them have two driveway slots, but the problems between them with ten feet park, now you're down to twenty feet wide, so you're going to put paid parking right in the middle of it? I don't see how you can get there. But that's not a decision or opinion that I can put forward to the governing body in terms of account. That's a decision that the board's going to have to make.
I mean, frankly, I expected, we have the auto connect, and he has on page fifty-five and fifty-six, given estimates of where parking is and where there could be easily converted parking. And I felt that the parking committee could ground-truth this. Um, that would be a relatively simple assignment to do because it seems to me that auto connect is basically saying, if you have six hundred paid parking spaces, there's going to be about this much revenue, and if it goes up this much, there's this much revenue, and even at six hundred, it looked pretty good. So, page fifty-six says that there is the opportunity to have six hundred and seventy-five if existing parking and easy potential parking are added together. That, to me, against this map is what has to be ground-truthed because there are some things on here that are side streets that you do question whether there is any place that they can park versus the marsh side of a lot of our, our deep streets like Greensboro, Sella fishing, everything.
Right, and I didn't take my analysis to that point. I just presented the, the data, and hopefully it'll be evident enough that that decision can be made, or that call can be made on that.
I just have a comment. It's not relevant. I didn't, I didn't expect you to do it, um, yet. But you said it was eighty percent built out, and you got a dot on eighty percent of the lots.
I'm, I'm swagging eighty percent, but...
Did you include all of the vacant lots that have posted rough up on current?
I just, I just took the, uh, the twenty-twenty ortho photo overlay from Brunswick County's GIS. It had a rooftop on it. They got a dock. I'm, I'm sure, and, and neither did I include, like, Evans has got forty houses under construction. I didn't go in there and add those in.
Right.
So, there's, there's a margin of, of swaginess to it, but I think that the, that the, uh, the story is told. Um, let's get, or...
Could you help me understand? I'm, I'm looking at the, the Powell Bill, and it says that it's, the funds are allocated, pay seventy-five percent on, on population and twenty-five percent on the miles of street. Since we only have six hundred and fifty people who live here and X number of miles of street, would it be fair to say that out of the funds that are available, we would get rather a small piece of that pot?
Well, uh, that's an annual allocation that comes to the town, that's about thirty-three thousand dollars a year that we pulled with that pool fund that. But my point, my point in, um, in, uh, showing that data was not from the aspect of that, you know, that's road tax, uh, money, the gas tax money, was not to show that revenue, was to show that that is, um, uh, the depiction of those miles requires that we certify and file a map that shows that the town maintains those roads. So, it'll go through on-street, off-street, uh, determination.
But I guess, what I, we allocate that money currently through keeping up the road?
It's in the general fund executed through the street budget.
So, it's already spoken through. It's, this, this is not a potential excess, or we're not going to oversee it?
No, sir. In fact, the, I mean, the, we overlaid the Powell Bill map on the big one, but the actual Powell Bill map is just smaller than there to decide it's, uh, just as a, as a...
Any more questions, comments? If not, Mr. Hewitt, let's move to number nine. Please, sir.
That's the, uh, let me get to it. That's in response to the board's direction to obtain a, a consulting quote from, um, their previously selected vendor for, uh, a parking program. And, um, they auto-did provide us with a, uh, a consultation, uh, quote. That quote is, uh, five thousand dollars at a hundred dollars an hour per person. Um, you know, that will go through whatever period that we need for them to consult with us on. And, um, I think the important piece of that is that, uh, let's just say to go through five thousand dollars worth and we get an answer and we decide to implement a paid parking program with them as the vendor, which had been selected that, they'll credit that back to, um, out of the, the proceeds from any parking program. So, this, this for your consideration to, um, to select them and provide you with consulting services, five thousand dollars.
Uh, David, is that something that we want to use this consultation to complement the map that you've given and work with the parking committee to come up with some suggestions to bring back to the board?
I, I think that's the, the assumption that, that you need to do is to use this as the baseline of, of information with that map and to use the parking committee to work through the consultant to come back to the board. Yes, sir.
And that way we can actually come up with some number of what we have and what we need and can move forward or not at that point?
I agree. I think that was your intent.
Yes, sir.
I, I guess, my, my feelings on this is that now that we have the information that the town, I want to compliment the town for being so thorough on, on response to the tasker and giving us a lot of information. It's time to bring this information to the committee and let the committee have some input on it with the discussion that we had about right-of-ways, packing in the right-of-ways and whether the people on East End are looking forward to perhaps having another two hundred and twenty-eight people parked there and all these other questions. And after the committee, after consultation, the committee goes to the consultant with what the committee would like done. And then the consultant can tell us if that's what they want to do because you can, you can use up fifty hours of consultation real, real quick if you're going to ask them to do the, you know, to do the analysis and help make, and make suggestions to us to make the decision. So, I think we should make the decision first, go to them, say, you guys have done this before, is this, you know, is this doable? And you can vote for that.
We being the parking committee?
Yes, yes.
This is Brian, and I think we absolutely have to have some consulting service from these people because they, well, we're trusting in them for one to absolutely know what they're doing. And they're the ones that has to, they're the ones that's going to have to pull this off if we implement it. And if, it's just like having a town attorney at these meetings. I think it gives some knowledge for sure. If we have questions at the parking committee and we're stumped and we don't know what the answer is, we absolutely have to ask somebody. I think it's very important that they be there. I, I'm sure it's going to take more than fifty hours. I wouldn't expect it, parking, paid parking to be implemented on this island in fifty hours without doing some homework. But if they say we need to have this groundwork done, then the parking committee can do the groundwork, and we don't need its consulting services till we get our groundwork done. But I think we need, we need a flow chart of what we're supposed to be doing. If it's, if it's going street by street to count parking spaces or whatever it is we have to do, people... people have done it before, um, Tim's done it, the staff's done it, countless times, over and over. But there's been, since they've done that, there's been two, three, four hundred houses built and those parking spaces are gone. So, the numbers that everybody has stuck in their head that we have six or seven hundred right-ofway parking spaces is, is completely lose. And people are gonna continue to park everywhere they can possibly get a car until we put a stop to it. So, in hand-in-hand with providing parking for our, I think we have a, we have a job, not only, you know, for the Army Corps Engineers and countless reasons, to provide some parking on the island. I, I think we have, it has to go hand-in-hand with eliminating people being able to park just anywhere they want to. Even on the police report, we, month after month after month, there's, there's so many parking complaints these guys have to deal with. But to not have a consultant there that knows what they're doing, I think we absolutely have to have it. If that's not available to myself and Rick and everybody else that's on that Parking Committee, I mean, you, I, I don't think, I, I'm not the person for the job 'cause I don't know enough about it to, to follow through with. I can, I'd have to have Tim by my side, can somebody park there, Jeremy or somebody like that? I have no idea. So, I think in order for this to, to happen or to possibly happen, I think we have to have these people in attendance. If, if it's here and there, then fine. If, if we end up implementing it, they're gonna give us some money, but we're not gonna be out anything. If we're not gonna implement it, then you guys are really gonna have a serious problem in a few years. So, I, I, I would make the motion to approve the agreement between the town and Auto Connect for the consulting services. If, if you wanna limit it to five thousand dollars, then that's fine. But I think we absolutely have to have them there. I'm not willing to participate in, in, in a Parking Committee that doesn't have a professional sitting in there with, and I'm not saying they're, you know, they're, they're a doctor or something. I'm just saying they know more about parking than any of us sitting up here.
David, when...
I think we're, I think we're saying the same thing. It's not, not to utilize them, but there's a point during the process when they would be better utilized. That's, that's the only point.
Correct. If we don't need them to get us started, it's gonna be important there, there to make sure they can give us direction as to what they need to, to implement the parking and then give us the homework to do without them having to be holding our hand.
David, when, when Auto Connect created the table on page fifty-five, fifty-six, did they take numbers from the staff or did they take areas and go and look and give estimates?
On what page?
Page fifty-five, fifty-six of the Auto Connect, um, RFP is where they actually have lists, have listed available parking places and easy potential parking. That's what I've been saying needs to be ground-truthed.
I don't have that in front of me, I, I don't know how they arrived at their, at their swag, whether it was from conversations with other staff members or, um, um, and I don't recall from reading that if, if it delineated how they got to that. If they did a windshield tour and just eyeballing places, I don't know.
Because again, that's what I would think needs to be verified, that these numbers are fairly accurate. And then, then it goes on from there.
Okay, we, point of order here, there was a motion made, I believe, but we didn't get a second.
One comment before we motion it. Um, the effective date of the contract is October first, I think we just need to put today's date as the effective date since it's an agreement contract and you're already about, you know, two weeks, twenty days away.
We didn't have the first Parking Committee meeting until the first Friday in November, correct?
Then we can make it November first.
November first, probably.
Um, it, it'd probably be best to do that tonight. I'm sure there's gonna be dialogue between now and the Parking Committee, uh, before then and...
You need a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you read the motion back and conclude the correction that the town attorney made? Or not?
Um, well, yes, but I'm not sure exactly where Brian or Commissioner were about to stop. I've got to approve the agreement between the town and Auto Connect for consulting services. Do we wanna stop there or if we wanna limit it to five thousand dollars, that would be fine?
Well, the, the Fiscal Control Act, if this contract is approved, is automatically, uh, a limit set to five thousand dollars without having to come back to the board.
So, then could it be to approve the agreement between the town and Auto Connect for consulting services with the effective date of October ninth?
Mr. Murdock, do you agree with that?
That's fine.
Who made the second?
I do agree.
You did, you agree with that?
That's just fine, Mr. Murdock.
And if we've got further discussion, everybody understand the motion on the floor?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, okay, it's unanimously approved.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I just advise the board that, uh, that there is no professional services line, uh, per se, that I would propose that this be paid for out of the governing bodies available to appropriate lines specifically? And if there's consent, so the board to do so, I'll realign that money into the appropriate line item.
I understand that. All right. Anything else on that, Ms. Hewitt?
No, sir.
All righty, Mayor Holden, number ten, wake zone. My first intention was to, uh, have a rather lengthy presentation tonight with some officials from the state and the county here. As I made some phone calls, uh, it became a reality that, uh, to get people here tonight, uh, on such a short notice, um, was not realistic because the services that are gonna be, need to be listened to, abided by, and all the other bureaucratic stuff, the different wildlife, Marine Patrol, Coast Guard, and all these people that we're gonna be seeking information and direction from to coordinate their presence here on a short-term notice, that was not gonna work. And to clearly define what we're talking about, we're talking about from Rogers Street to the first marker on the north side of what used to be Betty's Waterfront, which is now Lulu's. So, from that marker to Rogers Street is an official, no wake zone. And I also like to clarify that that in no way is intended to impede, limit, or otherwise interfere with the current use of commercial traffic. The priority of the coastal waterway is to service commercial traffic. That's the first priority. And no discussion anywhere along the way have I heard anybody have any thoughts about interfering with the ongoing, continuing use of the commercial barges, tugs, shrimp boats, and so forth. We're not talking about that. What we are talking about is the safety of the public using these, these, uh, fishing boats, skiffs, uh, any kind of boat, jet ski, personal watercraft, any, any kind of thing like that, which we have all witnessed, I'm sure, passing under the bridge in excess of fifty miles an hour, passing three or four, uh, boats at the time, side by side, uh, with jet skis flying around them. Uh, those of us that live in the waterway and there's no wake zone, uh, see it daily. And, uh, it's just a matter of time before something bad's gonna happen as well as a continuation of damage to these boat docks, uh, in the no-wake zone, which should not be occurring if the laws are being, uh, abided by. So, with that being said, and, and, uh, turning, uh, my attention to thanking Dr. Phil Caldwell, who has assembled a large number of pieces of information, uh, not limited to the passage of the no-wake zone and, uh, other supporting documents of the historical, uh, facts in regards to this no-wake zone. Uh, Dr. Caldwell has spent a very amount of time on gathering this information. I'd like to personally and on behalf of the town to thank him for spending that time of which we will share that information at the appropriate time when we can get everyone together to discuss this subject. And following along in conjunction with number ten on the agenda, I would, uh, also suggest that we discuss briefly number eleven, the boat ramp and the trailer parking. So, when we bring in the wildlife people and all the other, uh, government officials that can attend or, or, uh, wish to attend and hopefully will attend, it's all kind of intertwined. So, whenever, uh, we get those people here to talk about the no-wake zone, it'd be nice to incorporate their ideas and discussions in the, uh, boat ramp under the bridge, uh, here in the town limits of Holden Beach. We're talking about the boat ramp next to, uh, Captain Pete's, uh, immediately under the Holden Beach Bridge. So, I would like to summarize and say that in conjunction with your blessings, uh, Madam Commissioner and Commissioners, uh, I would like to move toward hopefully having a January meeting, uh, we can by then communicate with these, uh, officials and offices that are directly involved with the management overseeing of the regulations, uh, have as much representation as possible, uh, here at the January meeting and have these two items on the agenda for a more in-depth discussion and presentation. One of the big items is going to be is if you, the Commissioners, were to decide to support the, um, uh, enforcement of this no-wake zone, there are certain restrictions and requirements the Town of Holden Beach have to bless and participate in. And primarily that means we have to have buoys, uh, located along this no-wake zone. And, uh, the specifications for those are clearly outlined and easy to follow. It's just a matter of, uh, whether or not the Town of Holden Beach is gonna bless the, uh, placing of those buoys along the no-wake zone. As the boats pass through, they would be able to see these small buoys that notify them that they are officially in an official no-wake zone. And the first thing that comes up is, well, how are we gonna enforce that? Well, that hopefully will come out in the discussion because between the Sheriff's Department and all these other state officials that are in boats up and down here, uh, I don't think there'll be a problem with having some, uh, support, uh, from the county and the state as long as we uphold our end of it as required, uh, in the passage of the no-wake, uh, law. So, I would ask your indulgence and blessings that we put this, uh, uh, no-wake zone and the boat ramp and trailer parking on the January agenda and to allow, uh, the whoever's mayor at that time to, uh, follow up and discuss this, um, at the January meeting. Is that okay with all of you?
Yes, sir.
All right, so Madam Clerk, if you will, Fessamine Christie, Assistant Town Manager, Ms. Hewitt, Town Manager, if we can collectively work, uh, to follow up and notify the appropriate people.
Greatly appreciated.
Any of you have any questions, brother?
I got a little comment.
All right.
Been here a long, long time. Um, coming here since I was a kid. I remember the time Holden Beach had a police boat.
Yes.
Is it possible that if you implemented a no-wake zone, that the town could enforce it themselves?
I can give you the background on that.
Go for it, 'cause I, I never knew. But I remember back in the day, there was, there was a Holden Beach police boat.
Yes. At that time, I was fishing for a boat manufacturer and representing them in professional tournaments. And Jim McSwain was a resident here in Holden Beach. And, um, he worked with me in regards to communicating with that manufacturer. And they gave us, uh, a boat at less than dealer cost so that they'd have, uh, some advertisement out of it, I guess. And, uh, I can't remember how long it was used by our police department, but, um, the person that was the chief of police at that time later decided that it was not something that we had the staff for, uh, or someone with the credentials to run the boat. So, the boat was sold. Not that it wasn't needed, but I can't remember what year that was, but that must've been fifteen years ago, maybe, something like that? Maybe, maybe eighteen years, I, I can't remember what year it was. But anyway, we have been down that road, yes, but things are a lot different now. And that's something that you, Mr. Chief of Police, will have to give us some input on. And, uh, I know there's a lot of, um, strings attached to providing that service as far as liability and manpower and so forth, so you need to be thinking about that. I, I, I don't know whether we can get the deal that we got then or not. I don't know, but that's something, I'm glad you brought that up. But that is something we'd have to look at.
There's a lot of agencies out on the water right now that are perfectly capable of handling it themselves.
Absolutely.
There's four of them, so everybody that has a boat that's been up and down that waterway probably met them all, so. I don't know if we need another one, but I'm, I was just asking if that was a possibility, if it came down to it.
Yep. Any more questions? If not, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is number twelve. And that's you, Mr. Murdock. Block Q.
Block Q. I don't know if everybody knows where Block Q's at, but I'm sure they've parked on it at a time or two. Um, so track of land to the east side of the Holden Beach Bridge where the boat ramp is, where the festivals are held, where overflow parking is for just about anything you can possibly imagine. That, that, um, Holden Beach Enterprises, uh, Jim Griffin, Virgil, and Joe Taylor have been more than obliged to let us use for a lot, long, long, long time. And, um, sadly, two of them have passed away and the property's up for sale. This property's been offered to the town numerous times, I'm not gonna get into any details, but, um, it is currently up for sale. It is property that, that, that every one of us that lives here has, has used, has parked on. And I don't think anybody can say that they, they have. And boat trailers park on it, it's surrounded by boat trailers on any pretty fishing day. And, uh, it's, it is definitely the cause of a, a lot of, of parking violations and, and calls and, and that sort of thing. My only intention tonight is to present that somewhere along the line, and I'm not sure when, I wasn't privy to be sitting on the board, but somebody drew a map up that has two hundred and fifteen proposed parking spaces on this property. Unfortunately, it didn't get purchased by the town when it was really, really affordable. But I'm letting the public know that it's out there for sale right now. It is a possibility to be acquired. I have no idea what kind of deal we could possibly get on it at this time, but it would afford us some public parking for concerts. It would allow, um, you know, the tents and everything to still be set up down those streets and the, and the slides and the fire trucks and all that stuff you guys are used to. and all that stuff you guys are used to having down those streets if the town actually was fortunate enough to acquire it. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'm very disappointed that previous boards have let it go by the wayside. And I was part of one, you know, at the first of this year that was in the minority on buying this property. So I'm just letting everybody know. I'm sure it's public. It's been listed since I put this on the agenda and everybody knows it's for sale. But if this parcel of land goes away, it's going to be really, it's going to be detrimental. I don't know what we're going to do without it. If they put condos or houses or whatever, they ended up doing on it. I have no idea. But I want to put it out there. You guys take a look at it. And you're welcome to send in your opinions of what you think. It is a lot of parking concentrated in one spot. I would probably cut it back a little. I would offer some boat trailer parking there if we have to maintain the parking for the wildlife ramp. Maybe we could possibly go in some kind of partnership with them on it or something to provide just a little help on some of the money. I mean, you go to Ocean Isle Beach, they have 100 spaces for boats and trailers. I mean, we're lagging way behind. If they had intentions of putting a boat ramp there, I don't honestly understand why somebody didn't have intentions of where to park the boats and trailers that go into that boat ramp. But I wasn't a part of that either. All I'm doing tonight is making you, the public, aware of the potential to not only lose this property, but to lose the parking and the valuable usage of that property that we've all enjoyed for years. And that's really all I have to say about it. It weighs on me all the time. And I think, you know, it's just, it's part of a process to secure a reasonable amount of parking on the island, bring in revenue for that, to pay for it, and to not be a burden on the taxpayers that live on the island. And to preserve it for the usages that the town may want to use it for. You know, it doesn't have to be a parking lot. It could be anything. But it's a very valuable piece of property and it's for sale. And that's all I've got to say about it.
Any questions or comments? All right, number 13, we removed from the agenda, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, number 14, Ms. Sullivan.
At the last meeting and for the last few months, we've been discussing purchasing a piece of the pier property. And one of the main questions and objections that we've all heard that there's not enough information pertaining to the purchase that's available to the public. So I just wanted to make it known that we've placed on the town website the documents that are available to view. And that has to do with the purchase. It has to do with an inspection that was done, an analysis that was done. It's all on the website, available to anyone. And we've had it, we have it in the back for the people who showed up for the meeting today. And I would just ask that everybody who's concerned and rightfully so, take the opportunity to review the documents that are now posted and to please let us Commissioners know what you think about this purchase. Because whether the purchase goes through or doesn't go through, either way, it's going to affect the town in one way or the other for years and years into the future. So it's a very important issue and everybody should take the time to know as much about it as possible.
Any questions, comments? If not, we'll go to number 15. Commissioner Smith, oceanfront lighting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oceanfront lighting has not been as, in my 50 years as a property owner on the oceanfront, it's just never been an issue with this type of lighting on walkways or decks on the ocean side. I supplied all you guys with a photo of an illustration of such. In the past, most issues with lighting out on the beach were resolved by neighbors requesting changes to the objectable lighting. And in most cases, it was taken care of. In speaking with the president of the Turtle Patrol, John Caffeli, most everyone, he estimates about 90%, will comply with what the Turtle Patrol calls light pollution that would cause issues with turtle nesting. Therefore, my fellow oceanfront property owners, several that have contacted me and have contacted me several times over the past few months, and John, speaking for the Turtle Patrol, would like to see possible changes in our town ordinance is 92 dot point 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34 to keep oceanfront lighting restricted. I'd also like to hear from my fellow Commissioners how they feel about this issue before any motions are made or suggestions.
Comments or questions?
Well, then, if in that case, to support our Turtle Patrol efforts and to keep our oceanfront as it's been for the 50 years, plus years I've been here, I'd like to make a motion to request our town attorney look into possible changes to the ordinance that would restrict oceanfront light.
I'll second.
Motion and seconded, discussion?
I don't live oceanfront, so I don't know the gravity of the situation. But can you be a little bit more specific, maybe, about what has to be restricted? Is it the lights all the way down walkways?
All the way to walkways, all the way through the beach.
Or is it people with spotlights on their property? I mean, it's...
The way the ordinance reads on it, those lights have to shine down on the property. These just, I mean, it's lighter than, brighter than any spotlight. It's further than all.
So it's this? It's really the picture you've given us. This is what is the problem, not the other parts of the...
Yes, ma'am.
And I think I would like a little more from the Turtle Patrol, what they exactly define as light pollution? Is there a standard that they, you know, there are black and white lines for them? Is there certain wattage? What exactly does the Turtle Patrol define as light pollution?
Mr. Evans?
I don't know what they define as light pollution. There's something that has to force that order. I don't think it's going to work. It's vague and all of it. It's hard to, we struggle with it more than most to try to get it down that way. It needs to be looked at one more again.
It needs to be...
Need to have the attorney look for it.
Please.
Is it the consensus of the board for Mr. Evans and our attorney to get together and review that and get back to us?
Yes, please.
Everybody's agreement with that?
Yes, sir.
Consensus agrees and therefore let it be? Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. Number 16, public comments on general items. Those of you that are in the room, if you'd like to speak about anything that's on your mind, whether it's on the agenda or not, if you've come to the podium to my right after you've been recognized by me, give us your name and address and speak. Anybody in the room want to do that? Yes, sir.
I'm Dan Allman, 132 Raleigh Street. This block Q, how much are they asking?
Give and change the price.
It, you can ask. They've got it all combined together. It's over $5 million. They have three or four tracks that are all combined together. I don't know what they were splitting up for. I have no idea. It was, it's a lot.
Is it zoned commercial?
It's on commercial. As far as I know, the whole piece of property's on commercial. Condos, you have to...
There's a zoning act right there.
Yeah, you...
It makes you, it's allowed for...
Next use.
I think if I'm right, you can build a house on commercial property. But you wouldn't be able to revert back to commercial. But they could build anything. That's my understanding.
But neighborhood, $5 million?
Well, that's for several lots.
For all, for all, the whole area?
Yeah, there's a both sides of the road.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a couple of other tracks, a couple of scattered.
Oh, okay. That would help solve some of the parking problem.
For sure. It's already in the commercial area where everybody parks anyway, so... Or a lot of people park anyway. I'm not saying everybody, but people... If you'll come out on a Saturday, any given Saturday in the summertime, that block is surrounded by cars, boat trailers. You can't, both sides of the road. If it's ever built on, it's going to be...
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to Town Manager Report.
Yes, I have a very brief report tonight. First item is to want to let the board know that the annual audit for the year-end in June 30, 2021 has been submitted to the local government commission. And that'll be coming back to the board at their November meeting, I believe is what is scheduled. The second item is that I have a brief overview of the budget to actual as of the 30th of September. What this is, is we're 90 days into the budget. Want to hit a few highlights and give the status of our operational accounts. That is the general fund, the water and sewer fund, the beach park fund, and canal dredging. So what I'm going to show you in a chart is that, as always, our revenue collections on those items that are like taxes, that is the ad valorem taxes, sewer capital fees, and canal dredging, we haven't got any of those in. So we are in a deficit spending mode in terms of, you know, the government has to operate in those first 90 days. What it, and what we do is we operate on our fund balances, in those accounts. So it illuminates the need and the importance of strong fund balance. One item that I will report on is that our occupancy taxes are very strong. The first 90 days in, we've collected 80% of what we budgeted for the entire year. I believe that's about $2.5 million on the $2.8 million revenue projection, which was pretty much an aggressive approach. We ended up in excess of $3 million on the year's collection that ended this past 30 June. So folks are still coming to the beach, y'all. In the eye test chart, what this shows is that over on the general fund, we're about $0.5 million in the red as far as we haven't collected the revenue, but we're still providing services. On the water and sewer side, the same story is about $650,000 in the red. Some of those are the things that we do in advance of receiving the revenues later on in the year, in the middle of the year. In contrast, is the beach park access and recreation tourism fund, which is ahead about $1.4 million. And then, of course, the canal dredging fund doesn't have a lot of activity. It's in the red, about $6,000. Taken as a whole, as a cash flow, with all the funds considered, you have about $260,000 in the black, all of those. And what we will see is a typical sign wave of the revenues. You go up in the ad valorem taxes in the wintertime and down into occupancy taxes. So those things level out. We're within our budgets as far as on the expense side. It's just that this is the phenomenon we see every year. So those are the budget highlights for the four operational accounts. I do want to tease out the fact that even though they do appear in the red, they don't reflect any of the inter-fund transfers that we make between funds. And there has no, there hasn't been any fund balance appropriations that have been entered. So, for example, you saw in there where we were in the red in the general fund, not quite $500,000. Well, there is a fund balance appropriation in the general fund of $500,000, but those haven't been made yet. Those are normally, we do those at the end of the year to see where we need to, if we need to actually balance the books at this time. As a way of illuminating that further, this year, because of the robust collections in the beach park fund, didn't have to make the fund balance appropriation. If anyone is so inclined, this is a macro, 60,000 feet up in the sky view of it. If you want to see the line item budget, that is posted, the monthly budget to actual at HB Town Hall. It's on the administration website right next to my left eye on the department head picture. Last, but not least, I do want to report to the board that we closed on the sewer lift station loan that repays us back for the upgrade to lift station number three in the amount of $2.5 million. So we closed on that loan today. And that's the end.
Any questions or comments?
Town Manager, do you have any update on DOT and bike lanes and paving moving toward the bike lane?
I'll address that.
Oh, okay. Okay, never mind.
Didn't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 no.
Any more questions or comments, Mr. Hugh? Okay, next up is the mayor's report. First thing is, I'm very relieved that hurricane season, though it's still on the calendar, I've always said that there's not anything in sight on October the 15th. We've made it through the season, so I'm going to hopefully be correct and say to you that I think we're safe for this year. And we've been very, very fortunate as we have all watched our friends in Louisiana and the Gulf suffer dearly. Thank the good Lord. We don't want to see anybody suffering from storms, but thank you, Lord, for not letting us be part of that. We've been very, very fortunate. And along with the sand project that's coming this fall, late fall, winter, we're going to gain a tremendous amount of beachfront. And next spring, we're going to look the best we've looked in decades and decades and decades because of the efforts all of you have made, Commissioners and public in supporting, and especially the staff of the Town of Holden Beach for working so diligently in preparing all those documents that helped create the funding opportunities through the avenues of raising money, no matter what legal ways we went down. I know all of you worked hard that had your hands on that. We all appreciate that. Secondly, a reminder that the Festival by the Sea is coming up shortly. Was it two weekends away?
Halloween weekend.
And that's something that we're all looking forward to. And my understanding is we're still not having a parade. Does anybody know anything different than that? We are having the festival on the island and all the vendors are coming, but there will not be a parade. Now, Bike Path, Ms. Pat, you asked about that. And... Uh, now Bike Path, Ms. Pat, you asked about that, and uh, I was gonna mention that. I've got a, a GSAT's meeting this Friday the twenty-second at ten-thirty, and uh, that will be discussed at that meeting. And as far as I know, Mr. Hugh, you can help me out here, but as far as I know, the Bike Path program, thanks to the support of the staff and your commissioners, uh, we are still on track. Uh, I have no reason not to believe that, uh, that within eighteen to twenty-four months, hopefully we'll be riding on the new surface on Ocean Boulevard and a bike path on each side of it. And I had just talked with Mr. Hewitt uh, earlier this week, uh, yesterday, about how excited I am because that is gonna change the entire appearance of our island. To be able to ride down without feel like you wanna washboard and to be able to see the, the improvements, it's just gonna be a wonderful thing for all of us to enjoy. I'm especially proud of the way the town of Holden Beach, I've said this before, but I don't think I ever remember uh, the homeowners taking the pride in the yards and the homes and the condition upkeep uh, that's been maintained on this island. I think we probably look the best as you ride it down the island from house to house to house. Uh, the painting, the yards, everything, it just really is something. As, as your mayor, I'm very proud of this island, and uh, I do receive a lot of comments about it, uh, you know, on a regular routine basis. Uh, and of course, that goes back to the uh, staff of Holden Beach and the homeowners as well, uh, just working all together. I still get a lot of excellent comments about the uh, garden down here at the stop sign as you come across the bridge and enjoy the views, and you stop and you look to the left and you see all the flowers and so forth. People really, really do like that. And the maintenance department, having worked hard uh, mowing the shoulders of the road uh, as you come down onto the island, the shoulders are mowed in preparation for the festival. And I saw the maintenance department in the town working around under the bridge, getting the site ready for the festival. And I've seen the electricians down there checking the safety for all the electrical stuff. There's just a lot of things going on, and we as a community seem to be able to work together, and I'm just, I'm just proud of this island. And I'm proud of the fact that we, as a community, have been able to work together and, and uh, not have bad press on TV and in the newspapers and magazines. Uh, we have a good reputation, and I'd just like to pat everybody on the head and say thank you for that. Uh, Holden Beach is a wonderful place. Mr. Brown?
Just thanks to the staff, all your good work. We appreciate you, okay? Keep us safe, keep us safe. I, I wa- I wanted to ask a question earlier there, but you know, like in the wintertime, we're gonna be getting one or two little break-ins and stuff, anything like that this past month?
So uh, this past month, we actually had a, you know, should've talked about, we had a couple of construction sites that have fallen. Uh, even a dump trailer and some lumber. Um, we worked with the sheriff's office, they had a suspect on that because they were having the same thing on that side. Um, we've got a good relationship with them, and we were able to uh, make that arrest, recover some property and get, get everybody's stuff back, or most everybody's stuff back, so. But that, that little thing stopped almost as quickly as it started.
That's true.
Doesn't mean there won't be another one next week, but, but we're, we're doing everything again to make sure that it doesn't happen and does, we're putting in the police.
We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Town appreciates it, we, we, we appreciate you keep up the good work. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd like to thank the, the town staff also. You guys do a, a, a great job getting all this parking information together. I mean, that, that was an easy task. It looked like a, a monumental task. Uh, thank Kristy for our final draft of our uh, uh, comprehensive park and recreation plan. Thanks to Jeremy for the, the good job his guys do to, to, to keep this island where I don't really worry about locking my doors. This is not a place where I feel, where like I'm, 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 I'm gonna be robbed or anything like that. And that's quite, that's, that's a good feeling. I can't even do that when I'm at a hundred and high point. I'm glad to stay, to see the beach still full of visitors. I mean, usually by this time of year, it's uh, down to very just us residents, but by gracious, the fishing and out, and uh, the, due to this beautiful October weather, it has, uh, the beaches have been full on the weekends and uh, like you say, that's great for our occupancy taxes, and it is great to see people enjoying this beautiful beach. And like I said, with, with the reputation that we have, as Mr. Mayor said, it's uh, it is understandable why they want to come and be uh, be, be part of this wonderful place. I'm also happy, is, is Alan, that we've seemed to have squeezed through the tough part of our hurricane season, and as he said, Lord willing, uh, we won't have any more issues with the hurricanes this season, with a little bit. I am looking forward to the uh, November elections and the possibility of, of serving this, this wonderful town for four more years. All I ask is everybody to get out and vote. Uh, the, the early voting has already started. Uh, the polls are open in Bolivia, and uh, the, the election date is on the second. So everybody get out and vote.
Mr. Bryan?
I don't know about everybody else, but I'm glad to put on a long-sleeved shirt. This uh, this summer's been hot and brutal, and uh, I'm, I'm glad it's cooled off, it's beautiful weather, and everybody needs to get out there and enjoy it. That hot weather's a drag on you when you, when you're out there trying to work in it, so. This time of year is my favorite, the fish is biting and the, and the north wind's blowing, and it's a good time to get out there and enjoy the, the place we live. Um, while you're working on the DOT there, Alan and, and David, and I know it's been brought up before, if we could uh, maybe get a little permission to fit, fix our uh, welcome mat on the other side of the bridge, it's kinda sliding out from over the road now.
We're working on it.
We're working on it. Maybe they can plant a few flowers over there and, and fix that up a little bit. As always, I appreciate the hard work of the staff. That parking mat start looks awesome. And we got a, a hard road to hoe pretty quick on uh, seeing what we can do about resolving a lot of people's issues and providing the facilities for, for a um, reasonable amount of people to come enjoy this place. Hopefully, we can all come together and do that without uh, a lot of, a lot of trouble. But uh, everybody stay safe, take care, and um, as always, there's a lot of empty seats in here. I'd love to see your faces and, and just come to the meetings if you can.
Mr. Sullivan?
Not much left to say. I, I would just reiterate the, the idea that there are a lot of issues that are going to affect the town well into the future. And I would ask everybody that can't make it to the meetings to at least listen to the meeting and to tap into all the information that's available on the website. Other than that, have a, have a good rest of the fall.
Ms. Pat?
I'd like to echo what Mike said about a lot of people are listening, or a lot more people are listening to the meetings than used to. And I do appreciate the fact that the public is sending little stuff and big stuff periodically about concerns or questions, so please keep it up. Um, we do try to address things that, you know, we can do something about, and um, if you've got something that's niggling, that's, that can be just as important in a small area as a big purchase, so please, you know, just keep up the communication. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else got any thoughts? If not, let's look at number twenty on our agenda consideration of executive session. Is there a motion again? Do you wanna read first? Either way.
Executive session, per se, North Carolina General Statute one-four-three-three-one-eight-eleven-eight-five, insurance staff or agent concerning the negotiation of the pricing terms of the contract concerning the acquisition of real property in North Carolina General Statute one-four-three-three-one-eight-eleven-eight-three, consult with the attorney.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Pat and Mr. Sullivan, you second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
The party say no? Okay, motion to go back in the regular session?
Motion to go back into regular session.
Alright. It's unanimous, Madam Plurk, we're back in regular session.
Motion to adjourn.
Set. Motion by Mr. Brown and Mr. Murdock, second adjourn, all in favor, say aye? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Okay, motion to go back in the regular session?
Motion to go back into regular session.
Alright. It's unanimous, Madam Plurk, we're back in regular session.
Motion to adjourn.
Set. Motion by Mr. Brown and Mr. Murdock, second adjourn, all in favor, say aye? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.